Oh yeah, he hasn't seen the new setup.
Welcome to the Rapid City Planning Commission meeting, March 27th, 2014. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the agenda, there are speaker request forms to the left of the die. Please fill out the request with the agenda number of the item you wish to speak to and hand it to the secretary. If you have any electronic devices or cell phones, please turn them off or put them on mute so the ringer is silent. If you need to take a call, please step out of the room and take your call there so the meeting will not be disrupted. We'll start with the consent calendar now. Items one through six have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of the planning commission are recommendations to the city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items. Item five, 14 PD 004. Item six, 14 UR 004. The Rapid City Planning Commission actions on these items are final unless any party appeals the decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the planning, Community Planning and Development Services Department by the close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items one through sta- six that staff would like removed from the consent calendar?
Yes, items three, four, and six, please.
Okay. Are there any items one through six planning commission members would like removed from the consent calendar for self- separate consideration? Are there any items that audience member would like removed from the consent calendar for separate consideration? The chair would entertain a motion to-
I'm sorry, hold on. Five.
Five, item five. Yeah, three. Yeah. Okay, there's a motion made to approve items one and two of the consent calendar. Those, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. We are now ready for item number three.
Madam Chair, if we could take items three and four together, please?
Okay.
These are associated items. The first one is a comprehensive plan amendment to the major street plan to eliminate a collector street through the School of Mines property. And the second one is an associated vacation of right-of-way for Hawthorne Avenue. We failed to meet the publication requirement for the vacation of right-of-way. In addition, we have received some emails from an adjacent property owner indicating concern with the requests. We visited with a representative from the School of Mines yesterday and they are in agreement that these items be continued to your April 10th meeting. That will allow us to meet the publication requirement. In addition, that will give them time to visit with the neighbor. So with that, our recommendation is to continue to your April 10th planning commission meeting.
Motion's been made in second to move items three and four to the next planning commission meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Motion passed. Item number five.
Madam Chair, I'll be abstaining from item number five.
Madam Chair, the recommendation is to approve with stipulations.
Okay. Items been ma- motion's been made second to approve item five with stipulations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. And Andy abstained. Item number six.
Item number six is a conditional use permit to allow an oversized garage. Property located at 5568 Wildwood Drive. Let me take you through some slides. Properties west of the intersection of Sheridan Lake Road and Catron Boulevard, zone low-density residential district, the definition of private garages, total of 1,500 square feet, and the applicant is proposing, or has a 992 square foot attached garage and is proposing to construct a 1,120 square foot detached garage for a total of 2,112 square feet. It's a heavily wooded site. Proposed detached garage on the site. The doors will be facing in towards the existing dwelling. Got a lot of trees here which will provide some buffering, as well as trees on the other's west side of the house. The applicant has stated that the design and the colors of the, and the materials used for the proposed detached garage will match the existing dwelling. And there'll be some room, it's a hobby garage, can't be used as a second residence or for commercial purposes, and that's part of the stipulations of approval. Sign is posted on the property. There's the existing attached garage, looking to the west up Wildwood, which turns to the left there. Across the street to the south, back east towards the Sheridan Lake Road, you see Catron Boulevard in the distance going up the hill. And this is looking at the, the natural vegetation on the site that provides a buffer to, from the properties to the east. We pulled this item from the consent calendar to let you know that we have received inquiries into what was being proposed. Last night, there was a call, someone appeared to be in opposition, however, they have not emailed or shown up at the meeting today, but we just wanted to let you know that. Staff's recommendation is to approve with stipulations.
Motion's been made in second to approve item number six with stipulations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Now, we're at the end of the consent calendar. We're beginning our regular agenda items. We have some staff items. Ex parte communication training. Good morning.
I'm Wade Nyberg. I'll introduce myself again. I was here last time as well, but assistant city attorney with the city attorney's office. Just wanted to give you a little presentation on ex parte communications. I've got a PowerPoint that, we'll see if we can get queued up. Basically, ex parte means from one party. It's, it's talking to one party without the presence of the other party. It, it really comes from our legal system. It's, it's applied in board and commission settings, quasi judicial meetings like yours as well, but that's where it comes from. It's, it traces its roots back to a, an adversarial proceeding where there's two sides in litigation. Generally, you do everything in an open court, or at least with everyone present. So, ex parte would mean talking with one party without the other party being there, having opportunity to hear what the, the other party is saying. The key there, which I outlined, is it's outside of the official proceedings. So, it's not in a meeting where somebody doesn't show up. It's outside of the meeting where somebody doesn't have a chance to, to hear what's going on. So, who, who would be a party in one of your, you know, whether it's a use on review or, or a planned development or something? Obviously, the applicant would be a party. A citizen who's, who's opposed to it, probably at this stage, they're not a party. I mean, they're, they're an interested person. They obviously have something to, to say. And I think that's, that's really a concern with us, that we want to have, you know, we, we want them to have the opportunity to be heard, and we want the, the applicant to know what they're saying so that they can answer those. You know, if it's a neighbor that says, "Well, this is gonna affect my property value, it's gonna be an eyesore," it's, you know, whatever it might be. That's something the applicant probably needs to hear to be able to address. Staff, that's, that, sure, go ahead.
When somebody opposes a applicant is-
If it's in a public meeting, that's perfectly appropriate. But privately, that's, that's really the concern. And I've, I've got a few more slides on that, and I'll, I'll give you a few tips, tips on that, and we're gonna go through some of the concerns with that type of communication. So, and I put up there city staff, not a concern. They, generally, they're trained, they bring all of comments. If you talk to them, if you have raised questions, they're gonna bring that to the entire commission, most likely. If, if you ask them a question, and it's something they think that, well, the rest of the commission is gonna wanna know about, they're gonna bring that back to you, whether it's in an oral presentation or something linked to the agenda. But that's not really one of our concerns. Communications, this, ju- this is just to, I guess, give you an idea that we're talking about everything. It's not just when somebody calls you on the phone and says, "Hey, I've got a problem with my neighbor, what he's wanting to do over here." It's running into somebody on the street or at the supermarket, it's emails, it's text messages, social media, if they, if it's a public, if they're posting something on their page and you're a Facebook friend with them, I don't think that's inappropriate. I think it's if they're, you know, I don't know how many of you are Facebook users, real into that, but if they're posting on your wall or sending you a private message, that's something you wanna be concerned about. So, we're generally most concerned with this with quasi judicial bodies, and that's another Latin term, almost judicial, so it's, it's someone with decision-making authority. It's, it's not necessarily, it's quasi because it's not a court, but it has some decision-making authority that's similar to a court. You, you see two sides of something and you make a decision. Generally, it's final authority, so if it, if there's an appeal to council or to some other board, then that's not really necessarily considered quasi judicial. But ex parte, I bring this up because they're, they're more important there. That's, if it's a quasi judicial body, that's going to be a factor in a judicial review. They're gonna look at whether or not rules were followed, due process was given, and I'm gonna get into that a little more. Non- quasi judicial, that's, I put this in here because we recently got a, it was not an official opinion of the Attorney General, but it was a, a private letter opinion with regard to our Historic Preservation Commission. And their, their basic opinion would be, I guess boiled down, because they don't make a lot of final decisions, they, they're recommending body, ex parte rules wouldn't necessarily apply. I don't know that our office agrees completely with that. I think, well, first off, I point out, there's not really a South Dakota Supreme Court case that's, that's directly on point with that issue, but it is a best practice, and I think that as a commission, I think you wanna be fair, you wanna give due process, you wanna give everybody their say and make a decision based on all of the facts, with everybody having a, an opportunity to be informed and give their side of, of things. So, I think it's, it's really important to, to try to follow ex parte rules even if you're not a quasi judicial board, if you're not the final decision maker, if you're still making a decision that isn't appealed and becomes final, or if you're, even if you're, if you know it's gonna be appealed, whichever way you go, I don't, I don't think that's really a good excuse to, you know, set due process aside, or just make a decision and say, "Well, it's gonna be taken care of at council, and we don't really need to worry about it." So, I think they're really a best practice in that type of situation. So what are the concerns with talking with someone outside of a public meeting? Just one party without the other? Number one, it's the appearance of fairness, you know, in, in addition to actual fairness, where I think if you were an applicant and, and people were talking to the people, the decision makers, without you being present, bringing up all the negative things they can think of, you probably would want to know about that. You'd wanna know if there was some sort of influence, if there was, you know, whether or not it was truthful, I guess, from your point of view. So, in addition to actually, you know, conducting a fair hearing for someone, it's, it's also the appearance of fairness. The inability to have a complete discussion, that, make a couple of points there. It's, if you're relying on something outside of the meeting, then we don't have a, a good record of why you made your decision. Also, if, if it's just with one of, one or two of you, that concern isn't aired to everyone so that, you know, maybe other commissioners would have questions based on that, or have a different point of view, or have something to add. And so it, it, it really limits the, the ability to have a, a full discussion on it and a, a full and fair hearing. And then due process is the last thing there, and I have a couple of slides on that. When you, you sort of boil it down to the basics, and I, there's, there's other rights and, and things involved with due process, but these are kind of the basics that you probably need to be aware of. At, at its most basic level, due process is notice and the right to be heard. The right to be heard, I've got a couple of little sub-points there. To be able to give testimony, so you can come up and say, "This is my application, this is what I wanna do, this is why I'm doing it. These are the steps I'm taking to minimize effects on surrounding property," that sort of thing. Admit relevant evidence. So, maybe that's a traffic study. They can say, "Well, I've looked at this in another area, and here's what we found," and so that's something that, that is relevant. The, the one outlined there in red, right to an impartial decision maker, that's really, that's really the, the key with ex parte communication. We don't want you to be biased or have a predetermined outcome before you come to the public hearing on it, before you're in the meeting and can discuss it. Right to know evidence and claims against you or your position, representation by an attorney, and the right to a decision based on the evidence presented. So, that sort of ties in as well. So what, what's the standard? Basically, you need to be disinterested and free from bias or predis, predisposition of the outcome. Don't have your mind made up ahead of time without being willing to listen. That's really the, the key there. We want, in addition to, you know, actually having a fair hearing, we want the appearance of a fair hearing too. I know that's been an issue with other, I don't know, other boards and commissions, where a citizen will come to a hearing and, excuse me, I apologize for the cold. I've been fighting it off, but it finally got me. Citizens will come to a board meeting, and there'll be an item on the agenda, and there's a motion and a second, and there's no discussion, and it's approved, and they think, "Well, we didn't even talk about it, why wasn't there?" They're there to object, or they're there to, to listen to a discussion on it, and there's no, if they think that people, well, they talked about it beforehand, and, you know, somebody greased palms, somebody did whatever, they, they start to look at that as an appearance, that maybe there's not complete fairness there. You do have the presumption that you're objective and, and capable of, of judging things fairly, so it's, we're gonna talk about a little bit too, whether or not you need to be disqualified from something, but you have, you start with the presumption that you're objective and can look at things fairly. So, disqualification. If there's actual bias or an unacceptable risk of actual bias, you have to be disqualified from participating in making a decision on something. And this, I took this out of a, a South Dakota Supreme Court case. It's not a hyper-technical analysis. It's, we, we try to make things somewhat common sense. We look at whether your interest in something is different from just a member of the general public. Do you have a, a, a different interest in a matter that's, that's before you? Do you work for somebody that's involved? Do you, are you a partner with someone? Do you, or, you know, maybe it's a, a family member of yours, and that's something we'll get into a little bit in another slide or two. And that last bullet there is, is kind of the, the thing to look at, whether a reasonably-minded citizen would conclude that the official's interest or relationship creates a potential to influence your impartiality. So it's sort of a, it's, it's the objective standard, it's a reasonable person, whether or not your interest is, is different than a member of the general public. So these are our examples of a, basically, conflict of interest. Financial interest, that's, if there's something there for your own benefit, if you stand to make money, or there's a potential that you could make money off of something, you, you need to recuse yourself and, and not take part in that decision-making process. That includes the discussion also. If an item comes up and it's involved with your employer, that's where we talk about the indirect, so your employer might benefit from it. That obviously presents the unacceptable risk that, okay, if you don't vote a certain way, you could have some sort of negative impact in your employment. So, it's a financial interest. If, if there is an interest like that, if, when the item comes up, you need to not take part in the discussion and just let the commission know that you're abstaining. That's the financial side of it. The personal interest, that's a little harder to define, and this, these examples come from a South Dakota Supreme Court opinion, and I guess I don't know what to tell you other than it's a kind of a case-by-case thing, and our office is always available to help if you have a question on something. Please don't hesitate to ask. So direct personal interest, the, the example there is a mother being in a nursing home subject to the zoning issue in front of you. It's, sometimes that's a little bit of a stretch even. You have a little bit of a different interest because it's, it's a family member that's involved, but that's, to me, it's still a little bit of a stretch, so, you know, it's, it's a case-by-case thing. Indirect, that's even more of a, of a, not really a, I guess, of a, more of a stretch, but the example given was membership in an organization and a desire to help that organization further its policies. So, I guess if you're in the Qantas Club and they're asking for a conditional use permit, or maybe it's the VFW, I guess, that would be something where they're looking for a conditional use permit for alcohol. If you're a member and you're looking to advance their interests, then that's, that's something where you should probably recuse yourself. So here are some tips on what you can do. If somebody, if somebody wants to talk to you outside of a meeting, I think number one, you encourage them to probably put their comments in writing, that's helpful, but at least to share it with the rest of the commission. Encourage them to come to the meeting, send an email to staff, write a letter, even if it's to you that you can share with the commission, I think that's fine. Here, here's a, I guess, just a, an example of, of something you could tell them, you know, if they, if they persist in saying, "Well, here's what's really wrong, and I don't wanna get up in a meeting and say this, but this is really the deal." You can tell them that if they keep talking in that way, that you might have to recuse yourself, and that could take your vote away from their position. You don't necessarily have to commit to where you're voting, but just, just something that would encourage them to, to speak to the entire commission instead of just you. Put concerns in writing. If somebody does talk to you and, you know, sometimes it's, it's hard to stop somebody when they launch into something and they, you know, they get right through it and, or maybe it's even a shorter statement where they're saying it's gonna kill our neighborhood because of, you know, property values, whatever it might be. I think the important thing is to just disclose that to the commission that you've heard from citizens or a citizen, and their position was this. You can ask the applicant a question about that. I think that's probably appropriate to say, "Would you like to respond to that?" The last thing on there is disqualification. I don't, that's really another case-by-case thing, that if somebody talks to you outside of a meeting, I think that really the only need to disqualify yourself is if you're not gonna share that with the rest of the commission, or if it, if it, if you feel it, it's made you biased against the other party, the other side of things. So, here's, I guess, I'm trying to think of a good example for that. If an applicant comes up to you and says, "We really need to get this done," and they talk about all the benefits, and you can tell them, you know, "Well, I, you know, I understand this, you need to make this pitch to the entire commission." And they, I don't know, they, here's an example, if they do something inappropriate, they try to, you know, whether it's a quid pro quo, offer you something for your support, whether it's a, you know, "You should be really be on the city council, and I could, I could help you with your campaign and get you a good start," or something like that. If it's something inappropriate, and, and you look at that and you think, "Well, this, you know, I, I don't really care for this type of behavior, but this is something where I'm gonna be biased against this person because now I kinda think they're not on the up-and-up." That might be a reason that you'd wanna disqualify yourself, if you don't think you can give them a fair hearing after they've done that. Site visits, excuse me. This has kind of been an issue with our historic preservation. It, it's, it's really, it has a lot of the same concerns as, as speaking with someone because you're, you're on your own and you're looking at something, maybe you see something the rest of the commission wouldn't see, has, causes you to have a different basis for making a decision. So I think that if, you know, if you do really feel like you need to go and look at something, I think you need to share what you observe with the rest of the commission when it comes time for a hearing. I also think that it's important that if you do see some, you know, you go there and you see something and, well, that feature, whatever it might be in the landscaping, something, whatever it could be, really seems to make a difference to me. I think you should ask staff to go and take a photo of that, or a video, or something that shows what you're looking at. And that can be brought then to the entire commission. So, the last thing I had up there is give the applicant a chance to, to respond to those observations. If you say, "Well, I think this, you know, you need a retaining wall on this side," and that really changes the entire project, and it splits up the lot, it, it changes the dynamic of the neighborhood, and I don't see that on your plans, or it's not showing, I, whatever it might be, give them a chance to say, "Well, we didn't do that because," or, "Here's why I think you're wrong," whatever it might be. So that's basically the, the presentation I had. I'd be glad to answer questions.
I have one question, because, not recently, but when I first got on the planning commission, 'cause I wasn't familiar with all areas of town, I went around and drove all around town to make sure I knew what the areas were like, and the way you made this- And the way you made this lead is I shouldn't have done that, 'cause I would've had more knowledge than someone else. I think I have the obligation to have knowledge of the, the city and all parts of the city. So, I mean, I didn't do it in relation to anything, but I thought if I'm representing on the planning commission, I should, for me, familiar with all parts of the city. I mean, and it's been a few years, but-
Sure.
-the point I'm making is, I think that's, you should come from some knowledge base.
No, and I don't, I don't disagree with that. I think, um, you're really, you're expected to rely on your knowledge of the community. And there may be parts of town, uh, you don't know or haven't been to in a long time, um, if you live on the east side and don't get to the west a lot, something like that. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. This is really more in relation to a specific applicant. If you're gonna go and look at their site and, and if you note something that's different, then, you know, if you see something and, and sort of make an opinion based on an observation while you're there, I think you need to share that. And that's really, that's really the expectation, I think.
Up and said this, 'cause when I had gone there, I didn't expect anybody to be there. I was just going to look. And so, I disclosed it when I came to the meeting, that yes, this person came there, and this is what they said. So, I didn't feel I needed to disqual my, disqualify myself, because I had shared with the commission what they had said to me. It, was that appropriate?
Yeah, I think that was completely appropriate. No. I think that's, I think that's a bit of a, a stretch where I don't, um, unless you were involved with like the, the county committee and were one of the people really involved in, in making an application, um, if you're just a registered Republican and the Republican Party headquarters wants to, uh, get a conditional use permit for something, I don't, I don't think that's probably an issue. If you're, I would say if you're a Democrat and you feel you're really biased against anything the Republicans wanna do, that might be an issue, so.
Our mics? Can we please use our mics?
When we get a lot of, um, uh, emails from people in opposition, um, is it appropriate to respond to them, or just to say, "I've received your, uh, comment"?
I, I think it's probably more appropriate to say, "Thank you for contacting me about this. I think it's an important issue." Please, encourage them to come to the meeting. Um, forward it on, you know, I would say forward it to staff. I think that's probably the most appropriate. They can share it with the rest of the commission and-
Wade, I, I agree with Steve. I, a lot of times, I'll go out to an, an area to look at the site, because sometimes, say, for instance, this garage, and if that was a controversial issue, if it wasn't on the consent calendar, I might go out there and say, um, see what it looks like for myself. Sometimes pictures just don't do justice, and, but I don't do that to, um, be different from anybody else or try to talk to anybody. I just kinda drive by, get a visual in my head, and then move on. And I've always done that. I thought that was appropriate. Would you agree?
I, you know, it's hard a lot of times to look at a site plan, or even sometimes just photographs, and be able to really get a feel for that piece of property. So, excuse me, I don't think it's, it's necessarily inappropriate. I think that you probably just need to, uh, speak up at the commission meeting and say, "You know, I looked at the site and, um, I agree with the staff recommendation that the, the trees would provide a buffer." I think that's, I think that's just fine. I don't think that's really gonna-
Thank you.
-affect anything.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much, Wade. Appreciate it. With the sign code enforcement discussion will be in a couple weeks, correct? Yes, okay. Any other items? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn the meeting. Dennis seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.